Thank you. In accordance with the applicable statutes of the State of Illinois and the ordinance of the City of Prospect Heights, notice is hereby given that the City Council meeting of the Mayor and the City Council of the City of Prospect Heights is being held on Monday, October 23rd, 2023 at 6:30 PM. In person in the council chambers, Prospect Heights City Hall, 8 North Elmer's Road, Prospect Heights, Illinois. Mayor Patrick Levigson presiding. This meeting will be broadcast live on cable channels Comcast, Nastown, RCN Channel 17, and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. It will also be recorded and televised on Comcast, Nastown, RCN Channel 17, and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. Attendees who wish to speak on agenda or non-agenda items will be provided an opportunity during the meeting. There's a five-minute time limit for speakers.
We call the meeting to order at 6:30, no wait, at 6:32. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cameron?
Here.
Alderman Dash? Alderman Dolick?
Here.
Alderman Anderson?
Here.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Here.
Alderman Nash is absent by previous notification. Please rise for the political leaders.
I declare the House of Representatives to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and endless.
Item 3, approval of the minutes of the October 9th, 2023 City Council Regular Meeting. Hope everybody has had a chance to look at them. They need a motion to approve.
So move, Morgan Adams.
Second, Cameron.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Motion passes. We have no presentations tonight, no appointments, confirmations, or proclamations. Item 6 is public comment on agenda matters. Has anybody signed up for agenda matter comments?
It's not on the agenda.
Anybody?
Zetas.
Well, agenda matters, what's on the agenda? If it's not an agenda, we'll be at the end. So unless you're here about the variance at 1418 Auto Street, or our engineering service agreement for Willow Trails flood control, all right. But we'll assume there's no comments on agenda matters.
No.
You will be able to speak on non-agenda at the end.
Okay.
Item 7, the consent agenda. We have none. Item 02325 is a staff memo and ordinance granting variations to reduce lot width and required side yard setbacks for new single-family residents on a legal, non-conforming lot, 1418 Auto Street. This is second reading. So with this, in order to talk about it, we'll need a first, we'll need a motion and a second.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions about this? This was on our agenda last meeting. If there are no questions, let's have a roll call.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Alderman? I mean, excuse me, Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 9, new visits. R2329 is a staff memo and resolution authorizing design and engineering services agreement with the Walt Hamilton Associates Incorporated for the Willow Trails flood control project at an estimated cost of $191,000. I'm going to ask that, I'm going to look for a motion to approve this, subject to the city administrator deciding when to proceed with this work, when he is ready. Does that sound okay? All right. So I need a motion to approve it with that caveat.
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
I have a question. So I understand that our contribution for the city is 800,000. Does anyone know what we've contributed thus far, because this is an extra 191,000? We've done some preliminary engineering. I would estimate probably 25,000 or less. Oh, that's all? Yeah. Okay. And the part, the other side of it is, because there's a matching requirement, but it's 2.4 million of federal money. Right. Okay. Thank you.
It's like we like a highly leveraged with other agencies' money. So we have a first and a second to approve. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 10 is staff elected officials and commission reports. I don't believe we have any commission reports here today. So we'll start with elected officials, because I left. If you have a report or want to make one, speak up.
Okay. I just wanted to remind all our businesses to take some consideration to join the Greater Wheeling Chamber. They're getting, all of our members are getting a lot of attention, lots of opportunities for the community to know about their business. We recently had Taste of the Town, was very successful for all the restaurants that participated. And we were able to get tickets for Deli For You. We tried to get others, but they were so busy. So sometimes the information doesn't get fast enough to everyone because they're not members. But if they would all, and that's another reminder to sign up to E-News, you'll, you know then everything that is happening in the community. And obviously, when they become members, you'll know even more how the chamber helps out. So I was happy that Deli For You was able to make it. Some of our newer restaurants, they're just so busy, but it looks like they will finally get on board next year. So I'm looking for, towards everyone's success. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on my left have a report? Okay, on my right, elected officials, any reports?
Morgan Adams, I wanted to say it was a great educational experience to be able to attend the National Business Aviation Association Convention this past week. I had the pleasure and opportunity to meet our FBO representatives and to participate in meetings with FBOs regarding ideas, concepts, and opportunities for growth and expansion of the airport, and for business and commercial flights, as well as for consumer flights. We also discussed new concepts and future activities for the 624 runway, once it is decommissioned, and discussed uses of that runway with other carriers and developers, all of which I have referred to staff. I had the pleasure to meet top FAA regulators and attend and participate in meetings with, regarding FAA regulations. It was a pleasure to discuss issues with the Airport Board and Jeff Miller regarding working together better in the future for the benefit of both the airport and our city. An opportunity to learn about new developments in engineering and aviation technology, to see and physically go to the new high-tech aircraft and helicopters at the static display at the Henderson Airport, and to participate in meetings with new carriers, working with the airport, and discuss future growth and concepts and ideas with them as well. I also enjoyed great camaraderie ship with the Airport Board members and staff, as well as other attendees at the convention. It was really a great experience.
Thank you. Any other elected official reports? Okay. We'll stay on this side, and we'll go to staff reports on the right side. Anybody? Go ahead, Bob.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I just want to present the September 23 financial report. We're five months into the fiscal year of 2324, with 42% of the year has passed. Our city total revenue represent 32% of the budget, and our expenses are 22% of the budget. Interest income continues to come in strong, and we continue to seek investment opportunities to take advantage of favorable interest rates on CDs and money markets. Our major revenue accounts are in line with budgeted expectations, as is our expenses. On another note, second and third round of letters have been sent out to those residents with vehicles registered to Prospect Heights for the vehicle sticker campaign that we're working on. Those letters are an informational letter to contact the city, to let us know if those vehicles are still in their possession, or if anything has changed, to let us know. As a city, we don't know if a vehicle's been sold or transferred, and the information that we use is from the Secretary of State database that has the plates registered to the City of Prospect Heights. So if those letters, you receive a letter, please contact us and let us know if that information is correct or needs to be updated, or also come on in and buy your 2324 sticker. Over the next couple of weeks, we'll be sending out, unfortunately, $200 citations for those who have not responded to the letter. So please respond to either correct the information that we sent, or come out and buy your vehicle sticker. We're also working with our city attorneys to pursue collections on outstanding sewer balances. We just recently sent out the third quarter sewer bills, which will have your current balance on there, owed to the city. Those who are current, thank you for paying on time. Those with past due balances, please contact the city to make arrangements to pay. There's a, hopefully, we'll be able to, with the letters going out to those residents with outstanding balances, they'll be coming in and hopefully talk to us and try to make arrangements to bring their balances up to current status. That's all I have. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Any questions? No?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple things from the public works world. We just completed some pavement patching around town that was approved weeks back. We targeted some roads that are in really poor condition, actually crumbling and falling apart. Some specific patches, about 20 locations. Obviously, our roads are in need of much more repair, but it's a good step to get us through the winter without tearing up chunks of asphalt in these areas. Public Works is starting our fall tree trimming. We're on a five, six, seven-year rotation to get through the whole city. We do stuff sporadically as it's needed, but we really try in October, November to start getting at the trees around the plow routes. Our Alton Stormwater Project is almost complete. Restoration is still need to be done and a few little touch-ups, but the pipes are in, the structures are in, and it's going to make a big impact for that whole residential area of 40 or 50 homes. Arlington Countryside, we talked about in the past, that is up and running. It's complete. We have the crossover pipe, additional project that's still yet to be done, but the pump station is up and running, fully on its own, and luckily, we haven't needed it yet. But it's a real load off of everyone's mind that it's up and running. And the Tourism Board met last month and approved for holiday lighting, within budget, actually under what we've done in the past. It's a smaller scaled-down version of holiday lighting, but it'll be down the center median on all the trees there. So I look forward to seeing that this year. We haven't done that in about three or four years due to COVID and trying to save on some money. This year's project is about half of what we spent in the past, so it's very budget-minded this year, and we'll see outlooks. I'm really, really excited to have some more lights back in the area for the holidays. And that, that's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Quick update, approximately 15 months ago, we had a devastating fire out at Willow Trails condominiums, where 16 residents were displaced as a result of the fire. Happy to say, all but two of them are back in their houses as of this week. There were numerous delays at the very beginning. A couple different contractors were hired and then fired. There were some delays on getting people to clean out their spaces so the guys could do their work, but at the end of the day, it looks great. The contractor did a wonderful job. He was on time with his scheduling, and the residents are, all but two are back in, and the other two are waiting on essential appliances and things that they are responsible for. So I'm happy to say we can close that one out now. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan, not to put you on the spot, and if you don't know, just say you don't know, but the shopping center, any word on rebuilding, what might happen there?
You're specifically talking about the Ascot Center?
Yes.
We've had some conversations with the owner's children. They have made some promises, large promises, that haven't really materialized yet. They are right now on the plan of putting the property up for sale, is the last conversation that I've had with them. We are scheduled for a meeting on the 10th of November, when her, the two brothers get back into town.
Okay.
So that's where we're at.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other?
No.
That's it? Okay. Item 11, approval of the warrants.
The total for the warrants was in the amount of $395,416.07. We had a wire payment on October 6th in the amount of $181,157.93. We had a September IMRF payment in the amount of $15,255.82, bringing the total warrant amount to $591,829.82 for council's approval tonight.
We need a motion to approve the warrants.
I'll make a motion to approve warrants.
Second, Cameron.
We have a motion and a second. All those, let's do a roll call.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
The warrants are approved. Thank you. Public comment on non-agenda matters. Do you have a list of people? You want to go through them?
Yes, we have Jim and Linda Kleinschmidt, and Pamela Homarabski. Whoever's first.
We have a neighbor that at times has over 24 chickens in their backyard, a rooster. I have seen many more field mice making, it's like a highway going through my backyard. The smell at times can be unbelievable. I don't think Prospect Heights is a place to have chickens. Then we got another neighbor off of Camp McDonald that has chickens and a rooster that crows nonstop all day. So I don't know what we can do about this. I don't know if we can change ordinance, but I would like to see no chickens in Prospect Heights. Our neighbors here, who shall also speak, have also noticed the same thing. It's just, it's a mess. Thank you.
Thank you. That is a topic that has come up, and we will be addressing it soon. I don't know how it'll be addressed, but it'll be an issue that'll be brought forward. Dan, I don't know if this would be a good time to speak to that.
Why don't we hear the rest of the issues, so that we can talk about those, and then we can address it probably before.
I have the same issues as my neighbor. Fortunately, I'm not right next door.
You're lucky.
I know, I am lucky. But we hear the rooster all the time, and I think there's actually two roosters over at Camp McDonald, because these roosters are talking to each other constantly. And, you know, you can see the chickens running around in a yard a few doors down from me, and it's disturbing. You can hear them. And the mice issue, I haven't seen so much, but I've seen a lot more chipmunks around. So vermin definitely on the increase in the neighborhood. And I think it's all coming from these chickens, and then there's like a lot of chickens, it's not just a few chickens. I have taken the time to go through the ordinances of our surrounding suburbs. If this is of interest to you, if you haven't done it, probably you have, but I'll go through it anyway. Arlington Heights does not allow chickens.
I'm sorry, couldn't hear that. Arlington Heights?
Arlington Heights does not allow chickens to be kept in a residential property. Buffalo Grove does not allow them. Glenview does not allow them. Mount Prospect does not allow them. Northbrook will allow it if you have a two-acre lot, and put the chicken coop 150 feet away from the property line. Wheeling allows six chickens, no roosters, and they have an extensive requirement for the coops and what has to happen, and licenses are involved. And Palatine will allow them in a residential area. They have a lot of requirements for registrations, licenses, the number of chickens you can have, no roosters are allowed, and it requires the permission of all the contiguous property owners, required. And Displayings allows chickens, six chickens, there are also no roosters allowed, and that you have to have a permitted chicken coop. They have a lot of requirements as well. So, and I would prefer, as a resident of Prospect Heights for many years, that chickens are not allowed in Prospect Heights, so residential area, not a farming community. Thank you. Would anyone like my research?
If you want to give it, then I'll get your all, get full numbers after, so you can get contact. Thank you.
Hi, I live next to Jim and Linda. I was going to bring a bucket of chicken wings, but there's too many people here.
Who are your name?
George Cerise.
George Cerise, okay.
I don't think I signed in. Should I have?
No, no, just so we know who you are.
Can I order some chicken wings? At any rate, I think Jim mentioned that they have two dozen chickens, but he also, or he failed to mention that there's a rooster in that, in that lot, too. Did you say the rooster?
Yes.
Two roosters.
And I, you know, I took a ride down Camp McDonald Road, and I think the house on Camp McDonald Road might be 420?
No, it's 418.
Is it 418?
Yep.
How did you figure that out?
Because I called the police and they came out and talked to me.
Oh, okay. And that's another thing. Are we supposed to call the police for that?
For?
For rooster noises? Is that a police problem? That's what I was told. I called the village one time.
I don't know if that would be a, well, you know.
I was told the same thing, a nuisance dog complaint.
Mayor, if you'd let him finish, then I'll summarize the things and give some ideas.
I would think the police had more to do than, you know, chasing roosters, but other than that, I really don't have anything. I mean, it's a bunch of chickens that are making noise, and they're a nuisance, and it's not Iowa, you know? So I think something needs to be done. Is there an ordinance for Prospect Heights?
Dan will go through that. Once you're done with presenting what you want to present, Dan's going to go over, over this whole topic. Anybody else? No?
Yeah, I'd like to say something real quick here. I don't want to live next to a chicken farm, because if I did, I would have wound myself more, but I've been here 20 years, and I grew up in Prospect Heights. I've been here since 1964, so.
You got me beat.
My mom was still living in the house they built.
Okay, Dan's going to cover this topic a little bit.
All righty. Thank you very, thank you very much. Just to bring everybody up to speed, the city ordinance does not address chickens specifically. As such, because it is in the livestock, people are allowed to have it. I've been here almost nine years, and there were chickens here before I started. Urban agriculture has grown significantly in the last 10, 12 years, and especially during COVID, more and more people brought them on. We advise everybody that roosters are, in our ordinance, a nuisance complaint, the noise, and it falls under our noise ordinance. Also, chickens at large is livestock at large, which is addressed in our ordinance, so there are requirements. When people have come to us, we do require them to get a permit for the coop, their specific sizes. That's if they come, if we find out about them and we've talked to them, and we'll address it, but that, we look at chicken coops as accessory structures. That being said, there, we're well aware of over 20, 25 residents in town that do have it, and historically, we get only about two or three complaints a year, and when they get rid of the roosters, the complaints go away. Okay? Because that's typically where they start. We've not had an issue with numbers until this year, and you're the first ones that have brought up numbers. What, because this is an issue that affects both people who do not want chickens in there, obviously, that's what the statement was tonight, and then we have folks that do like chickens, what my recommendation is, we have a standing committee, which is the Plan Commission. It also functions in the role of the zoning board, but because we don't have zoning rules, they'll be functioning as the Plan Commission. My suggestion and recommendation would be to assign this topic to the Plan Commission. They do have, and this will be an agenda item on a public meeting, so the public can come and talk and participate in the process, and we can hear from both those in favor, those against. We can review other ordinances, because there are other towns, and you've mentioned a few that do allow them. We could look at structuring what could be a reasonable ordinance that could satisfy both those folks who desire to have chickens and those who do not. Okay? Would be my recommendation, from a staff perspective. But I would need direction from council to move in that direction, and that could be done tonight, I believe. Mr. Attorney? I believe that council can direct that to the staff tonight.
We've also done some preliminary work, and legal councils can provide it a framework of some of the things that a municipality needs to look at. I can ask John to, or?
Okay, very good. All right. Man in the chair tonight.
Yes, so we have proposed a few options, from not regulating chickens at all, to completely banning chickens, simply adding chickens and roosters to prohibited animals list. Three, allow chickens in the city, but with certain limitations, such as the number of chickens allowed, where chickens are allowed, where the coop must be placed in the backyard. Prohibition on roosters, and we have seen that there's a sale of eggs involved as well, so desired limitation on the sale of eggs. And the fourth and final option would be allow chickens, same as option three, but require licenses. And this would allow city to enforce, regulate who can have chickens, when and where.
I do like the idea of using the Plan Commission. These are a group of people that are used to dealing with city code and zoning and whatnot, so it's not just somebody coming in there proposing things they might not know can't be done, right? So they're the experts with us. I do think, like any issue, I sit in this chair today over an issue 30 years ago. Because of an issue 30 years ago, I just ask everybody to have an open mind, realize you're not going to ban them, and you're not going to make them 100 per yard, right? There's going to be something that has to be done where people can meet and come together on it. Is 30 too many? I'm not going to tell you my personal opinion, but.
Would you want the way that you want it?
But I think there, I think there's a, you know, like somebody else had said, I've only been here since 1968. Before that, my dad was here since 51, so I've been here a long time, too. There's always been chickens here. There were ponies here, there were goats here, there were, everything was here. They never went away. I think people just now are maybe doing too much with it, so we need to do something to regulate it, and I think the best idea is to use the Plan Commission, and because of that, there'll be open meetings, you'll be able to come to them, speak, listen to what they say.
When they are.
Are those preset dates?
The PZBA will be publishing, they'll be voting this week on the 2024 schedule, and they are a set date. It's either going to be the fourth Thursday or the fourth Wednesday of the month. And specifically, these, these will be just agenda notice on the website. If you sign up for the city E-News through the city's website, you'll get notice of those agendas when they're published. And then I will take everybody's information tonight before you leave to make sure it gets put on a list, so when we do get it on an agenda, you'll get notice of that.
Okay. So before you leave, Dan will put a piece of paper over there. You write your name and email address or phone number and we'll make sure, we'll let you know when those meetings are coming up.
When the city attorney is going to get the list of things we're looking at, can confinement of chickens be included? Because in some of those ordinances, they specify that the chickens have to be kept in the coop or an enclosed pen.
We have a clean slate. So this is going to be built from the ground up as far as what's allowed, not allowed. I have a lot of questions too on the coops. I mean, can we limit where they are next to homes? How far they have to be from a home? Whether the coop has to have a permit to be built? There's a lot of things and, you know, he told you the meetings are for twenty-twenty-four. This is not something that's going to happen in the next thirty, sixty, ninety days. It's going to take a little while, but make sure we get it right and to keep everybody as happy as everybody can be. So you'll, you'll know more. Sign up with Dan with your name and email address or phone number. And I promise you, it'll be absolutely transparent.
To answer the question on the calling the police at this point in time, if it's a nuisance that's going at five o'clock in the morning, we're not here, okay? We can't address it. What we can do is if you don't want to call the police and you want to leave a message or an email, do so, we will then talk to them about the rooster. Okay? Thank you.
Yeah, city wake us up in the morning?
I live in McCauley.
I live in McCauley, Tony.
I've got five neighbors with, three of them have roosters, so I understand completely.
Okay. That, that's it. We'll close the public comment on agenda matters. We have no executive session.
Don't we have to, council have to vote on referring the matter to the PCBA?
No, it's just, it's just.
It's a recommendation, we don't have to vote on it? Okay.
Right, just direction.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, with that, then I look for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.